Okay. I'd like to call to order the town of McCandless meeting of town council for July twenty fourth. If all of you could join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good, thank you, everybody. First off, I want to announce that we were an executive session prior to this. We're discussing legal matters and no actions taken. Next up, the the tone and the culture we set here. We read this every time. We will work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree, but we will do so with civility and respect. Because in the end, we're all neighbors. A few announcements, National Night Out, August first, from five to eight here at Town Hall. Learn about your local police and first responders and stick around for fun activities and food later, and one of the radio stations will be broadcasting live from the event. Say the date, Community Day, September ninth, more to follow on that one. And then, last but not least, the town is seeking applicants to serve as our junior council member program. You must be a town resident, a high school junior or a senior. You'll serve a term that's basically about the the school year, and more information can be found on our website. Does any other council members have an announcement they would like to make? I'm seeing them, okay. Next up, public comment. If anyone is here that wants to make public comment on an agenda item, please approach the microphone, tell us your name and address, and you have five minutes to address. Seeing none? Oh, we have, yep.
Ellen Wright, nine six three five, over from the road, Allison Park, D A, one five one oh. So, um, I'm still curious when the agenda for July tenth was posted. At the July ten meeting of council, I said that it was not posted until July tenth. I based that statement on the attached printouts that showed on Sunday, July ninth, that no agenda was posted and that no reminder was listed on the town webpage under news and announcements. Also, because I didn't expect town staff to be posting news and announcements on Sunday. At the end of the meeting on July tenth, we were told that I was in air and that the meeting agenda had been posted on Sunday around three P M. I was pretty surprised to hear that the agenda was posted around three P M on Sunday. It was Sunday afternoon that I looked at the agenda in the news and and also looked at news and announcements. I didn't think that I'd missed the posting. On the twelfth, I went back and looked at news and announcements, and there was now a posting that stated Town Council will hold a move meeting on July tenth. The posting dates say that the announcement for July tenth Town Council meeting was posted on July sixth at eleven fifty-nine A M. Currently, the only Town Council meeting posted under news and announcements is tonight's meeting. So I'm curious, when was the agenda for Towns Council meeting posted for the July tenth meeting? So if we look at the next page, the next page shows what I saw on July ninth. And you'll see when I looked at July ninth, there's no agenda posted. The third page, under home news and announcements, the last, the most recent posting on July ninth, when I looked in the afternoon, was a posting for July sixth at nine thirty something A M. Then the next page is the correction that says that the posting for the meeting was done on Sunday around three P M. And then the last page that says Town Council to hold meeting July tenth. This is what I picked up on July twelfth. It now says that there was a posting for this on July sixth at A M, sort of left fifty-nine A M in the morning. So, that's, I just wanted, I hadn't provided documentation when I made my statement last time. So I just wanted to share the documentation that I had and that led to my confusion as to when this was posted. Because I wasn't seeing it on Sunday afternoon. That's my information free there. And the other thing is, I was looking for the minutes because I wanted to see how they had recorded what I had said for the June twenty-sixth meeting. And I had said quite a few things and it had been summarized and it's tough. I have now have a printout of what I've said at the June twenty-sixth meeting, which I'd like to have included in the minutes, and I will share that with you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anyone else with us tonight that would like to make any comments on anything on the agenda? Seeing none? Next up, the July tenth meeting minutes were included in our packet. Does anybody have any revisions to those? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July tenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. Back in Mr. Casey. Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We have enough, right? Kathy stepped up, okay. Make sure. Okay. Reports of committees, Mr. Casey, if you could take us through the Administration and Finance Committee report.
We'll start off. This great house.
Good evening, council. You received the checklist in number six in the amount of one million two hundred thousand approximately in your packets. Does anyone have any questions on any of the pages in the checklist for June?
Seeing none? I'll make a motion to approve checklist in number six, dated June first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, totaling one million, two hundred, one thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixteen cents as submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board in town website.
Second.
Okay, second, Mr. Casey. Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Going to do the next two items kind of together. You did receive the dashboard report for the six months ending June thirtieth. The revenues in the general funds are consistently performing to budget compared to prior year, as are the expenditures. And we are seeing a slight income from over the course of the year, over expenditure, income over expenditures. The percentages for public safety and public works are relatively consistent as as compared to other months. If you move to the next item on the agenda, there is a budget update. And we want to do an overall budget update for the general funds and for C I P as of June thirtieth. And so that will encompass some of the numbers that are on that dashboard report as well as some additional items. Sure. Seeing what I, there we go. So, we did this last year. It was well received, and so we anticipated doing it again this year with some expansion. We'll talk about some things today. We'll talk about something that we'll put off talking about until November, when we have a little bit more results under our belts as we typically do with the budget process. And we're doing this in advance of the two thousand twenty-four budget process, so that staff knows where we are and we can make adjustments as needed to move forward with some capital projects. So to start off, we're going to talk about the two thousand twenty-three revenue performance. We're going to talk about some expenditures that are in progress or missing their targets. And then we're also going to talk about some capital improvement project costs and where we're at, and that six point seven million dollar budget year to date. So you have heard me speak over the last six months about earned income tax. Earned income tax budget was increased for two thousand twenty-three by about three and a half percent. It's performing at about six and a half percent currently. And that's great news. I'm anticipating about a hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase over budget for two thousand twenty-three at this time. And fourth quarter is always a bigger quarter for us, so of course, we'll look more at this again in November. Real estate transfer tax, we've talked about that and how it's underperforming in two thousand twenty-three. We did take a reduction in the budget for two thousand twenty-three based on pre-two thousand nineteen levels with the rise in interest rates and the slowdown initially in the real estate market. We anticipated there being about a quarter of a million dollar reduction in that revenue item. It's performing a little less than that. Right now, I'm forecasting an additional two hundred thousand dollar reduction. The good news is, we did see an increase in June. So over last year, so I'm hoping that that shock of the interest rates is subsiding and that we'll see that revenue item perform additionally in the last half of the year. Interest earnings, most interest rates right now for short-term investments are over five percent. So a lot of our fund balance that is not needed in the next three or four months is being invested at that rate. I'm anticipating about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in interest income for the general fund in two thousand twenty-three. That's very good news. That will make up for any between that and earned income tax, I anticipate that helping that real estate transfer tax number. The recycling grant underperformed from year to year, that's kind of a guess until we file, and so I'll just be a little bit more conservative on that in two thousand twenty-four. And we have a number of revenues from state share and dividends from our insurance that are delayed. So money that I normally have at this point of the year, I've been told we'll receive at the end of August, plus some additional state share money that we normally receive in August or September. Those are huge chunks of money that will also affect any expenditures as we get closer to November. So, very mixed bag when it comes to general fund revenues. Overall, at this time, I am not projecting, or I'm not proposing a budget amendment next month at this time for the general fund revenues. Any changes you'll see in the next slides, I'm hoping will come either through savings and other areas for expenditures, or worst-case scenario, hit that interest income. In the capital improvement project funds, on the revenue side, we've had two very good amounts of news in regards to grant revenue. We have received local share grants, not only for the H V A C units and windows at Town Hall, but also for we received an R Lee Grant Award for traffic signals. We initially had roughly three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in traffic signals proposed for two thousand twenty-three. That grant came in at around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, interest earnings for C I P are outperforming budget. I anticipate that those numbers will not climb as high as general fund because you'll start seeing that fund balance and those revenues from liquid fuels for the road program being spent as those projects are accomplished in the next couple of months. Couple of projects that are in process that we budgeted for the general fund or have been, you know, haven't occurred yet in two thousand twenty-three. We still have the strategic planning money in the council line item in software for finance as well as for tax. We have dedicated a couple projects in the finance department. We are anticipating the payroll piece being awarded to a third-party vendor. We hope to have that implemented by October as well as we are working with the current software vendor for the tax software to update it for R B A as well as add the business privilege tax software, which is the big question mark going forward. So you'll see you'll see some changes in some of the software and then third or fourth quarter for two thousand twenty-three. Those overages, I'm sorry, not overages, let's say savings of fifty-five and twenty-four thousand probably will be pushed to two thousand twenty-four. We have a savings in overtime and salt. As you know, we had a very mild winter, January, February, March. I anticipate that we could potentially have costs in November and December, so I don't want to take all of that savings. But potentially, we have about two hundred thousand dollars still available in the salt and overtime costs. We did not hire part-time summer parks maintenance help this summer through Public Works. We just didn't have the applicants that were qualified for that work. Some things that we're going to see overruns in. We anticipate that there will be an overrun in the ordinance codification. This is based off of the new website and the Saldo posting. We may be able to push this to two thousand twenty-four, and in that case, it will be budgeted, and there will not be an overrun. Public safety vehicles, we anticipated that some of that outfitting could be moved from vehicle to vehicle. It was not, and so we had to go out and get additional costs there. Fuel is not as bad of a story as it was last year, and we are seeing a couple overages in fire and ambulance. However, those will be offset by the revenue that we receive from those entities. The ambulance authority has purchased two, um, it's not unleaded, I apologize. The ambulance authority has purchased two diesel ambulances swapping out the regular gasoline, and they are seeing cost savings with the diesel ambulances over the gas. Jeff at Public Works, he is experiencing some larger-than-expected vehicle and machinery repairs for some of our larger equipment. We did a cost analysis on getting them repaired versus replacing them. And with the savings in ice and snow this year, we're going to take some of that savings and move it into that machinery item. So as I mentioned, those items are a few of the things that I will probably show as swap-outs under the budget amendment for general fund, but it will not be an increase at this time for revenues or for the overall budget. Some things that we'll be considering later in two thousand twenty-three, we'll continue to monitor fuel costs, legal fees, engineering costs, both are typical items that we need to swap around in November based on activity and the different projects that we pursue. We are currently subcontracting that building official cost. We are currently seeing a wash between payroll savings and the cost of that subcontractor, as well as the revenue that we're receiving for the building official. We do have money budgeted for revenue for that item, but right now, it's it's a one-to-one almost exactly for what we have received. I will continue to monitor that. Software implementation costs, as I mentioned, those are between what we have with Tracer with planning and growth management, as well as the implementation with the payroll system and the changes to R B A for the tax services and the website. There may be additional costs. And we are tracking electricity, just because it's running higher than it normally does at this time of year. We had some increases in fees. I'm almost done, promise. So, capital improvement projects. We've spent about a million dollars of the six point seven million dollar budget. That's not uncommon for this time of year. As you know, most of our C I P projects, we have to wait for good weather. We have to wait for D E P approvals on different plans. Working with Gateway and Legal to just get everything up and running and ready to go. Um, what I do know that we need to do a budget amendment for currently is for the laser culvert. Those bids came in at least three hundred thousand dollars over budget. So we will need to find that three hundred grand. Brian and I are working on that currently with Jeff at D P W, and I believe we are we have found that money. So through the course of the next couple of weeks, before I bring that budget amendment to council, we will solidify that and move forward so that we can sign that contract. Um, projects that potentially are over budget, we had a slight overage with Perry Highway, just because there were some non-reimbursable costs from the grant. I'm going to cover that with fund balance. The projects that are underway and expected to remain within budget, the stormwater drainage improvements that D P W does ahead of the road program, the work is ongoing and it's within budget. That may be where we get some of that three hundred grand. The road program began in July. And this month, it's expected to be finished, I believe, at the end of next month. And it is currently under budget. And again, a lot of that money is funded through liquid fuels from the state. While Park is underway, they're doing a fabulous job. We expect that to come in right around budget. And then we have traffic and park cameras that are projected for this year, and again, we expect those to stay within budget for two thousand twenty-three. Projects that are still to be completed, the traffic signal upgrades, we are waiting for a state's notice to proceed on that grant. And we will have to do a budget amendment depending on how those expenditures are expected to timeline. So if they go over the three seventy-five in two thousand twenty-three, we'll fund it with the additional grant revenue and increase that expenditure budget. It'll be a wash. The Town Hall windows and boiler improvements, we anticipate coming in the H V A C and boiler work to come in in two thousand twenty-three. The final bids have not been received yet, and so to propose a budget amendment at this time, it's not, we're not ready. And then the stormwater management and flood control initiatives, which is the M S four work. We have the Longview at Little Pine Creek and Vestal at Pine Creek Watersheds. They are in design and D E P review stages. So we will proceed with those as soon as we receive those finals. That is the update. As I mentioned, I anticipate bringing you a small budget amendment for capital projects, just because we want to have that budget amendment in place when we sign some of these contracts. We'll do that in August. We'll need to advertise it, take public comment on it, and then it'll be ready to go to either vote on the last meeting of August or the first one in September. So any questions on what I provided, any input on budget amendment items?
Yes, sir. Dollar amount that we need to, the council needs to approve for a budget amendment?
Anything over forty-two thousand dollars, correct, forty?
Well, it's a budget amendment. It's on the five, isn't it the five percent?
Yes.
Or the
And anything, any
Or and the ten thousand dollars.
Yes. So those, because of the three hundred thousand dollars at the six hundred thousand dollar bu, six million dollar budget, excuse me. I believe that we will need to make that a formal item, because we're also increasing the budget versus just swapping the money from expenditure to expenditure because we'll be bringing in revenues as well as expenditures. Anytime you increase the budget, it's best to bring it before council.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Great House.
Thank you.
Good job. Communications report.
Communication report is in your packet. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Liaison reports. Let's see. No meetings for, no meeting for Dr. Rafa. How about President Taral?
There actually was a cog meeting Thursday evening, and I, this morning, I gave the minutes. With the Brian and gang, so we'll, those are in your package. You want to look at them.
Great, thank you. Any public comment on administrative or finance committee items? Hey, great. Let me turn it back to Mr. President.
Yeah. It's missing, Mrs. Eisenreich is not here. I'll run through the planning and zoning real quick. First up, R J, planning director.
Good evening. I only have one new application to give you all an update on. We actually have a couple that are pending in front of the Planning Commission. But the first two out of three applicants elected to table themselves this past meeting because they wanted some more time to go through the town engineers review comments, and there were a few questions, and I think the Schultz Ward application as to whether they wanted to do a phased approach or not. So while those are kind of working through the process administratively and behind the scenes, they were not actually discussed at the Planning Commission meetings past month, but I do expect at least one of those to be back for the August meeting, which is already coming up next week. We had a little bit of a short turnaround time because of the July Fourth holiday, so the one that we did actually discuss at the Planning Commission is the Valvoline. It's a redevelopment of Northwest Bank, which is the site that's beside the McDonald's in the Flats area. That is actually, well, the set of three that we are, you know, that we have pending in front of the Planning Commission are the last applications that are coming before us under the old code. So, just for everyone's benefit, if you apply before, you know, you've got an ordinance that's out there pending advertised, whatnot. The applicant is still able to use the old outgoing code, even if you are hearing their application at a meeting after it's been passed as long as they applied before the code was passed, so we'll probably have these applications going for a couple of months. We're kind of have, going to have to be switching in our brains a little bit behind, between, you know, what what we would normally expect to see versus what, you know, is in the previous code. So just so you're all aware of that, the Valvoline also is going to be coming back next month after, you know, continuing to work on some of those engineers review comments. There was some discussion at the Planning Commission about the traffic flow in the site. At this point, Pendot hasn't identified any improvements that would be needed to be made to Perry Highway to account for the use of the site as as an oil change facility instead of a bank, so you know, assuming that Pendot doesn't indicate that further, they will be, you know, proceeding with a normal H O P, but nothing really would change in terms of our review process. So, but there there was some discussion about site flow, and apparently you can pull out behind the McDonald's when you're getting your oil changed or banking done, as it were, at that site. So if that, if that does indeed go forward, everybody just keep an eye out for cars that are freshly oiled, I guess. Anyway, so that's, that's going to continue being reviewed at the Planning Commission, as well as the other two applications, the one for the Schultz Ford that we did the rezoning for a few months ago, and an overflow parking lot at, I believe, the N A I site. I want to say Carson Middle School maybe is what we have the overflow for. It's off of Hillview. So those should be back in August. I still have the zoning and Saldo section here on my report, just because we do have these administrative items, you know, as things are, the process is kind of concluding in the backend. So as I mentioned before, we're working with Ecode, which is our online code vendor, to figure out, you know, what what we should get uploaded within the budget this year, if possible, versus what, you know, we can kind of work into the site a way for people to continue using the PDFs that we already have available, you know, what makes the most sense with the funds available. So in the coming months, we'll be figuring that out. In the meantime, we do have the PDFs online now, so if anyone wants to look up the new code, they're on my department's page, their link there. And the PDFs are fully searchable, and also the table of contents are programmed, so it's not too terribly different from what you're able to to get when you use Ecode, you know, to to link to codes. Guess the only thing is I can't send you a link to a section, so we do have page numbers now, by the way, for anyone who was waiting for those. So you can flip to an actual page. We also are finalizing the official zoning map PDF that, the old zoning map is still what's linked online, so we have a zoning map available at all, but due to the age of the files that were used to build the old one, there's a little bit more of it involved process on the G I S and technology side for getting our new map, so that it is in the same format, and, you know, as useful as the old one was, a little bit of drying roads in North Park that mysteriously have vanished between the old one and the new. So once we get all of that figured out, it will, again, hopefully be a lovely frame of reference that everyone can hang in their offices and yeah, use to figure out what's going on in town and where. So if anyone has any questions about that, happy to answer them, but that is my report.
Thank you, R J. Next up, liaison reports, Mr. Singer.
I think R J pretty much summarized everything we did. The only thing I would like to say is, you know, give Planning Commission a little nod, you know, they are very thorough when they go through these. I mean, at the Valvoline, they they think about the environmental impacts, the traffics, you know, the overall site plan, look design. You know, know you're in good hands with Planning Commission. They they have our best interests. So that's all.
Okay. A zoning hearing board, Ms. Clune?
The May minutes are in your packet, and there will be no July meeting, so it'll be another month before you see two minutes.
And is there anyone in the audience here that would have any comments on specific for planning and zoning?
Um, and is there anyone in the audience here that would have any comments on specific for planning and zoning? You, come on up. Uh, Ms. Swiger, can you do the reports of the rec committee from where you are?
Yep, I've got it. Okay, so recreation committee, first up liaison reports. Um, activity advisory committee, um, really, the only things to highlight, what you guys have already talked about earlier. Um, is the National Night Out coming up on August first and then Community Day on September ninth. Does anyone have any questions, comments about that, by the way?
Uh, I just went and commented, I didn't get to stop in, but it looked like the um treasures in the trunk was a great success this year. It's a lot of people there.
Oh, yes, yeah, I heard that was great too. Yep. Um, okay, so next up, we have the Finance Development and Promotional Committee for the Heritage Center. Um, that would be Mary Ann, so.
Jack, Jack can handle that.
Mary Ann sent me a note. She said the actual meeting was very short. It was less than thirty minutes. Um, some of the details, the HCC Facebook page reached three point four thousand people last week. The best performing post the last month with five point four thousand. That's, that's excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the postponed drive-in movie will, is tentatively planned for late this, or early fall. Uh, the electricity for the sign apparently is going in on July the twenty-sixth, and then the actual sign will come shortly thereafter. So that's good news. Uh, they're working on a five oh one C three and that should be done soon. The gala planning session was held after the official meeting. And that lasted about an hour and uh they're seeking. Some finances from businesses for sponsorships and donations. And they're putting all to, together the details for the tables, et cetera. Uh, and also, Joe wants to know who from Town Hall will be attending. Does anybody have any formal plans? I'll be attending.
This is the November game.
Yes.
I'll be out of town unfortunately.
Okay. And that's it for now.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Can't see because I'm not in the room.
I don't see any here, Carolyn.
Okay, then that concludes our reports. Thank you.
One item that was missed, uh, our, the F T P C is having a family putt putt contest. It's gonna be on August fourth. At the putt putt um right next to Town Hall. Um, there, there is a flyer that has been given to the Communications Director. And uh, you know, families. Family fours, I think the cost is forty bucks. And they get a tea, they get a drink, they get a hot dog. And they get to play uh for gray jackets. So, thank you.
Mr. Wall. See, next up. Town managers report.
Uh, town managers report, I uh, it was in your packet. If you have any questions about anything on there or any general questions, please let me know. I think I'd make one note that the project down at Walpark uh with the um. The, the new baseball softball fields that are gonna be down there, we make them nice progress and uh they got it all laid out and think it'll be. A big improvement to that part down there.
Town engineers report.
Uh, also included in your packet, we have uh Dan and Kelly here from Gateway. If there's any questions for them or myself.
Seeing none from council. Town attorneys report.
My report was also part of the packet and uh no public report this year.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up, old business. I think all three of these relate to uh the Ridge Residential Plan. Um, I think we kind of know what these all are. Does anybody have comments or does anybody have any questions before we go through these three?
The developer's representative actually sent me a PowerPoint. Yes.
Can you? If you wanna, if you want me to speak now or later, I'm not sure.
Uh, yeah, if you have something.
Please, yes, uh, yeah.
We get the.
Yes.
I was here uh last month. And I believe, I believe there were like two items that were discussed. One was about the stormwater potentially uh draining on to the uh Penn Power Station. So we've addressed that. And then I think we've uh wanted to show you uh the property that is near Mr. Wright's property. I think he spoke. Occasionally or briefly here, um, uh, showing that we're not disturbing that area at all. So you can, you'll see that as well. Um, so I can go through the, the quick PowerPoint here. Um, again, uh, we're not. Uh, drain any stormwater being directed to the Penn Power Station. Next slide. Shows you in red where our detention facility is, in green where the Penn Power Substation. This is our grading plan. Uh, next slide. Shows you the aerial photography showing you again in red where the uh detention facility is, in green circle. Is where the Penn Power Station is. Below that is where Vespa Park is. Next slide.
Okay, well, hang on. Let me try that again.
This is a blow up of the area showing you again in red our detention facility, uh, in green is the substation. Uh, that orange area is our emergency spillway. Uh, we show blue arrows draining to the inlet. So that's where our outlet structure is going to be discharging. There's an existing inlet in that location of our property. So we'll be discharging our outlet control structure. To that existing catch basin, as well as the emergency spillway if it ever would. Rise up that much, very highly unlikely, but if it does, it'll drain towards our. Existing catch basin in that location. So there is no water draining to the substation. We also submitted a letter to Penn Power stating, you know, that we are doing uh development next to them. So they are well aware of that. Uh, next slide. Just, uh, this is the FEMA FER map showing you uh Aryan Red was where the ridge is. Aryan, excuse me, Aryan Green is where the, the ridge is. Aryan Red is our detention, so, excuse me, Aryan Red is the. Uh, substation. And then it shows that we, uh, the substation is. Uh, well above the FEMA floodway and the, the flood plain. Um, so I think I will take care of the uh stormwater and let's go to next slide. Uh, showing you that we're not disturbing within thirty-eight feet of Mr. Wright's property. Uh, he has not taken title to that portion of the property. So however, we were. In the planning commission, you know, plans and our final plans, we showed that we're. Uh, keeping four trees that he wanted, uh, that was next to the, his property. That's based on our property, but there's four trees uh that he wanted to have maintained. So. Uh, Aryan Red is Mr. Uh, Wright's property. Uh, in that, um, that'd be the, I guess, the northwest corner of the ridge. Next slide. Showing you uh again where Oak Ridge uh Drive is. Uh, the area in red that's showing there is uh the area that we're not disturbing. That's that thirty-eight feet that he uh is. Uh, is concerned about and Mr. Uh, Wright property and house is located in a red outline there. So we are not disturbing any of that property that is, that joins uh his property. And I think that is it. So, uh, then let's talk about the highway occupancy permit. Um, we are, we've submitted our traffic plans to Pendot. Uh, there's only two comments left. One is a stormwater consistency letter that we get from the town. And then the last, next one is a sealed uh stormwater report, which we will be doing. So that was the only two comments that Pendot had. So the highway plans that uh. Um, that we submitted did show a sidewalk along nineteen. Um, as what we always showed on our plans. They have been adjusted slightly, but. I'd say about up to ninety percent is the same. The thing that has changed is we are proposing a concrete curb rather than keeping the wedge curb that is currently out there. Putting the sidewalk next to uh the curb and then in some instances, there is a, another curb on the other side of the sidewalk. And that is just to uh take up grade. And uh, all our cuts are two to one slopes, our fills are three to one per the town. So, next slide. Uh, shows you what uh, you know, the plan has changed slightly. Um. RJ is gonna be blowing it up there for us. That's great. Um, again, showing you that it's a long Route nineteen. Um, basically, it was the same location, other than we are uh required. I guess we're proposing to put the concrete curb next to uh the berm of nineteen. And then again, put the sidewalk in and then put another curb on the other side in some areas just to get elevation change. So.
And just for everyone's reference, that stormwater consistency letter you mentioned, I do have. Me now, um, I think from your traffic engineer requesting that. We usually provide that once the development has been approved, just so we can verify. You know, that the final version of the plan, we saw there are no outstanding stormwater design formatting comments, whatever, like we know what. Is moving forward, is okay with our stormwater. So. You know, once approval is received, I have like.
Not, not a problem. Understand. And I ask.
Yes, please, yes.
Actually, this goes to our town engineer. I had asked her to go down. My issue really wasn't the fact that your spillway. Goes onto the substation, but that whole area is now packed tail. So it's all swamp and. Can it handle the water and, and not affect the substation in the event that there's a concern?
Yes, so they uh, they did provide calculations to that point showing on the plan that it has capacity for the outflow. Um, and I know we did require uh them to upsize the riprap apron at that location to ensure that it is going to. Help prevent any future degradation uh of the stream channel at that location where it outfalls in the uh with that existing pipe.
Sure, if you're good with it, I'm good with it. Thank you.
Any other question?
That's it. No, correct any of this? No, Carolyn, anything?
So an item A, I'll make a motion to approve the modification, modification request number one to allow fill slope. Of, excuse me, two and a half to one in a limited area behind lots one and two. As shown in the plans in order to save four large trees at the rear of the property. If granted, the approval is conditioned upon full plan approval being obtained. I'm also gonna add in here that consideration, Steve, is that okay?
Sure.
So in addition to that, sir, understand that the plan must comply with all regulations and laws included. But not limited to the issue of adverse possession as raised by Mr. Brian Wright at the Town's Planning Commission Meeting.
Second.
Second, Carolyn. Okay. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, item B, I will make a motion to reject. The modification request number two to waive the requirement for application to bond the streets, trees and sidewalks. If granted, the approval is conditioned upon full plan approval being obtained.
Second.
Second is Trish. Uh, so everyone in favor of the rejection, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the opposed, okay. So the rejection.
It's been rejected. Um, item C here, we have a motion to approve the final subdivision land development application for the Ridge Residential Plan. Submitted by the Ridge Pittsburgh LP located on Perry Highway, block lots one zero seven one dash E dash two five one. One zero seven one dash E two seven two and one zero seven one dash J dash two five three. Contingent upon all items being addressed as identified in the Planning and Development Staff Report. Dated July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three and the Engineers Review Letter dated June first, two thousand twenty-three. Put the first one.
Second.
Second.
Okay, second by Trish. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, next up, new business. Basically, we're applying for a, a grant for two hundred and eighty grand. That's what this.
Yes, this is a resolution so that we can apply to the state for a uh multimodal transportation fund grants. Uh, this one uh is additional sidewalks. Uh, similar to the two grants that we received on Perry Highway and on Grubbs Road. Uh, this is uh to kind of further connect. Some sections on North Meadows that need some ADA ramps and also just some sidewalks, older developments that we didn't require sidewalks in.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Can I read it?
Yeah, please, Karen.
Okay, motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution nine of the two thousand twenty-three. Series requesting the multimodal transportation fund grant of two hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. From the Commonwealth Finance and Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to be used for sidewalk connectivity. And Americans with Disability Act ramps off of North Meadows Drive.
Second, second, Mr. Casey. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that motion carries. Uh, next up is a, what awarding a, a bid?
Uh, yes, so that we have uh three um separate culverts that take Pine Creek under Blazer Drive. Uh, additionally, um, we have uh the culvert under Winchester Drive. That uh we are gonna do a gun night rehabilitation, uh, which is essentially lining the inside to extend the life of the culverts. And uh, the recommendations from Gateway. Um, is to ward the base bit amounts and also the uh, the base bid number two uh for the Winchester culverts.
And this was in, within budget.
This, this was uh it higher than we expected, but uh something that uh will cost more if we don't do it at this time. And that's probably the best price we're gonna get this year for this project. I'll make a motion to adopt the contract for Blazer and Winchester Culverts Gun Night Rehab Project. In the base bid amount of one million five hundred four thousand six hundred ninety dollars, along with base bid two in the amount of thirty-four thousand sixty dollars. To National Gun Night.
Second. Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And lastly, what is this one writing?
Uh, so our, our police officers per their contract have what's uh often called a drop plan. It's a deferred retirement option plan. It allows them to continue to work while uh starting their pension program, but putting that into a savings program to help them defer costs. Those uh, of other unexpected items in retirement. Um, Officer Todd Ray has uh asked to go into the plans during this fall and uh. By our rules, council has to approve the uh. Application for him to enter the drop plan. I'll make a motion to accept and approve uh the Deferred Retirement Option Plan Agreement. Election of Officer Todd Ray of the McCandless Police Department.
Second.
And Mr. Casey, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Uh, lastly, public comment on any non-agenda items. Again, five minutes, I'm on up, name and address.
Saying none, very good. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, please.
Okay.
I came over yesterday and I spoke to this young lady and.
Your name, ma'am, and name and address.
Lois Malvick, and I live in fifteen thirty Hazel Road. Connecting Peebles and Thompsons, you know where that was.
Yeah, I lived it on Haslam.
Certainly where you could show these pictures. No, okay.
Yeah, not, sorry.
I'm not prepared for that. I have pictures, but uh. I asked her what the ordinances or what. On fences. What rules, what laws do you have that apply to fences? Because I've got three different fences in my yard that only one belongs to me and the others are in disparate here and then. I have no control over that. So what's your position on that?
So this here, ma'am, is for public, public comment for us on council. So with very specific items like that, we would refer you to.
Oh, just kind of talk to her then, not here.
Yeah.
Oh, she thought I should come and talk to you.
Yeah, there, yeah, if there's a bigger i- i- issue that, you know.
What's the issue for me?
Oh, I, no, I get it. I mean, I guess I'd say if it's a more global issue to our whole community. We, you know, we, we.
There's a way that that can be resolved somehow?
Uh, yes, we have a, we have a two code officials that would look at them and tell you along with any consult, consultation with our town engineer or our town attorney to say.
To make an appointment?
Who is right? No?
We, well. We already sat down and had our discussion of what's available in the code for the situation. So I mean, my answer would be the same.
You didn't tell me anybody code.
The ordinances that we talked about, that's, that's what I was referring to when I.
I don't even know what they were. We didn't talk. Did you tell me some ordinances? You just said come to the meeting. No?
No.
This is Malvick.
This is Malvik, may, may, one of the. Yeah.
You want me to come over and see you?
Why, why don't we just chat after the meeting?
Oh, yeah, all right, thank you.
Why don't we do that? Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.